75 a month. Bordeaux 3R, an efficiency unit, 900 a month. St. Moritz 1U, a one-bedroom unit, 800 a month. Orleans 1R, an efficiency unit, 875 a month. Heidelberg 1M, an efficiency unit, 650 a month. Marseille 2F, a one-bedroom unit, $900 a month. Heidelberg 3Y, a one-bedroom unit, 850 a month. Zurich 2C, a one-bedroom unit, 850 a month. Marseille 1U, a one-bedroom unit, 845 a month. Orleans 3M, an efficiency unit, 650 a month. Nottingham 3F, a one-bedroom unit, $900 a month. And Nottingham 1P, a four-bedroom unit, for $1,200. We approve the following seasonal leases. Zurich 3O, a one-bedroom unit, four-month lease for $3,800. Interlochen 1E, a two-bedroom unit, a three-month lease for $6,000. Edelweiss 2O, a one-bedroom unit, a three-month lease for $1,500. We approve the following permanent occupants. Edelweiss 2G, a one-bedroom unit. Applicant is the wife of the leaseholder. We approve the following sales. No stoppable letters were available at the time that we can approve these sales. Orleans 1I, private sale, one bedroom, $62,000. Orleans 3O, private sale, one bedroom, $55,000. Marseille 3I, private sale, one bedroom, $62,000. Edelweiss 3E, private sale, two bedrooms, $89,500. Orleans 1X, a private sale, a two-bedroom unit for $89,000. And Nottingham 1C, a private sale, one-bedroom unit for $65,000. I hope that these amounts are really sinking in. None of the new rentals are below $800. We're reaching the $900 level on many of them. And my bedroom units, we don't see any going for less than $52,000 anymore. And they're going up into $62,000, $65,000 range. So it's got to make people feel good. Even in some of the un-renovated buildings, the values continue to go up. And as I always try to say in each meeting to owners who do have rental properties, don't sell the property short. This is not a low-rental area. And the apartments should be kept in good condition. They don't have to be completely remodeled, but they should be nicely appointed, and you should get a decent rent. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my committee members, who are very, very hard. Sidney Shulman, Naim Spiegel, I don't see Bernadette Thompson, and Alice Large, who was away at the time. The committee would appreciate a motion, accepting the reports as presented, and ratifying all actions of the committee.
Do I have a second? Second by Colette. Any discussion on the board? Any comments from the membership? Roll call, please.
Holly Thompson?
Yes.
Frances Mesereau, yes. Mark Richman?
Yes.
Sandy Bev?
Yes.
John Labriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Thou?
Yes. Just to finalize the numbers, the four one-bedrooms averaged $61,000. The two bedrooms averaged $89,000. So we're moving in a good direction. Next on the agenda is the February board meeting. Does anyone want to make a motion to cancel the regularly scheduled board meeting for Monday, February 17?
I'll make a motion to cancel the January?
February.
February 17th. Or maybe...
I second. Seconded by John. Any discussion on the board?
Yes, I have a question, mostly for Jason. Are there any significant events happening in February that would require a board?
At this time, I don't. If something happens to come up that can't wait, then you can just have a special board meeting. But right now, I don't have anything that I have scheduled that needs voting.
Roll call, please.
Holly Thompson?
Yes.
Frances Mesereau, yes. Mark Richman?
Yes.
Sandy Bev?
Yes.
John Labriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
And Marvin Thou?
Yes. Next voting item, the last voting item, is the moisture test for the Nottingham. Jason will explain that.
Okay. You will see in the, towards the back, probably the second-to-last page, a proposal for $1,150 from Atlantic and Caribbean Roofing Consulting. Basically, the purpose of doing this moisture test for the Nottingham roof is we know we have to change that roof. The time to do it is before it rains, of course. There are two, to, in order to save a considerable amount of money doing that roof, we would like to do a recovery system, as we did on the clubhouse. In order to do that, it needs to be proven, and we don't know either way, the actual moisture percentage in that roof. If it passes 25%, meaning in excess of, actually, excess of 24%, so 25% or greater, then you have to completely remove the current roof and replace the roof. Doesn't mean that they take the concrete off the roof. It's just the system that's above the concrete. The alternative, if it's not more than 25%, is to recover the roof, which can save you more than $100,000. So we want to be able to test it because the city will come in and do that. We want to do it before the city comes in. We want to do this ourselves and get a professional to give us all the reports, so that we can see where we can save and where we can't. And that's what's before you now.
May I have a motion to accept the moisture test as presented for a cost not to exceed $1,150?
I do so much buzz.
Motion by Frances. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mark. Discussion on the board?
Jason, before we do this, let's make it perfectly clear that we wouldn't have to do this if we decided to do the complete replacement, right? The moisture test is only if we go with the option of the roof overlay. Is that correct?
Well, in order to go with a roof overlay, you have to make sure, it has to be 25, it has to be less than 25% moisture. So you can bid it out to both, except a bid that may be for that system to recover. But then when the city comes in during the permit process and says, "You gotta rip that roof off," now you're in trouble. Because now you're gonna spend a lot more money. Because now you're gonna have to stop what you're doing, have another roofing, or whatever the situation is, change your bidding from roofing, from cover to replace. It's gonna increase your costs automatically. But by doing this in the beginning, you're saving yourself that time and money.
You mentioned the city coming in. Are you talking about the 40-year certification?
No. City, no, no, no. Anytime that you replace a roof, the city has to give you, you have to get a permit. So when the city, when you get a permit, the city comes in and says, "Okay, what do you want? You wanna do a roof recovery? No problem. We want a moisture test." If we already have the moisture test, knowing that it's less than 25%, we can hand it, signed by these people, to the city and say, "There's your moisture test."
But we're not being told right now that we have to do the roof. It's not, it's not like the 40-year certification report where we were being told by the city, "This is something we have to do."
No, no, no. No, this is just for you to know your moisture percentage, so you know how to spec your roof out to your business.
I understand, but approving this item assumes that we would at least consider the option of doing the same thing on the Nottingham as we did here. And we've had a few months of experience of the roof overlay here. Have there been any issues with that? Because if there haven't any issues, I would be very leery of going with the same system on the Nottingham, because it's a bigger roof. It's more, there's much more residential units there. And if there are problems, the consequences would be much greater.
Absolutely.
So I want to be absolutely sure before we go with it, if there have been any issues with the overlay.
Okay, what I can tell you is there are no issues for the lower, for the overlay in this building, but we're not, I don't, I am still not convinced this is the actual system you would do there anyway. There's a foam system that we can use over there, which has worked very well for buildings, which will cost you a lot less than a recovery. And it will also, the issue that I have is, you're right, there's a lot more people going on that roof. When you have a lot more people going on the roof, you look at, you look at it differently. The only people going on this roof are your own employees. But over there, you're gonna have a lot of people going on the roof. So, but regardless of this whole conversation, you approving this doesn't assume anything. It doesn't even assume you're going to do the roof. What it does is, it gives you the tools that you need, should you decide to do the roof, to know what type of, what you need to do, either a recovery or a replacement. That's all this does.
I still would be more comfortable knowing that that kind of system would be the right thing to do on the Nottingham, before we even approve this. Because again, if we decide it's not the right way to go, then this test is, you know, without meaning.
No, it's not without meaning. Let me explain it again. Regardless of the system you use, whether it's gravel, whether it's foam, whether it's Duralast, you still have to have a moisture test. You have to. The city will not give you a permit to do any roof recovery at all, unless you have a moisture test.
I'm not talking about the recovery, I'm talking about the full replacement. If we decide to go with the full replacement, we wouldn't need to know what the moisture level is, because it would be irrelevant. We'd be taking that whole section out anyway, right?
Of course, but I'm trying to make it so that you don't have to spend more than $100,000 more by doing this. By taking that way, that means you're saying, "Forget about even the possibility of doing a recovery. I want a full roof replacement." So yes, you're right. If you know that you're not even gonna try and do a recovery, then you don't need to do this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I want to know if it makes sense to go with the cheaper option for Nottingham, or based on the fact that it's a residential building with much, much more estate, if we should get more opinions from architects, from engineers, in terms of whether that's the right way to go with that. And I would like to have that assurance first before we do this. Because if it's a question of safety, if it's a question of, you know, major consequences down the road, I would rather spend the extra money and do the right thing, rather than, than it was the situation where we're going the cheap route, and it's gonna cost us much more in the long run because of the consequences down the road. That's what I would like to see. So I would like to see more, maybe, I personally would like to table this item and get more feedback from engineers, architects, to tell us if it's the right thing to do.
That's for the board to decide, if you want to have an expert come in and do that.
When are they gonna charge? When are they gonna charge? When are these folks gonna charge to come in?
Yeah. Can I speak?
Benjamin Dobbins?
This is still directors.
No, I'm asking, Jason. I've got my post to play.
If you know, or if you can estimate.
Microphone, please. Microphone, please.
I was just asking, Jason, if he knows, or if he can estimate from his experience, the cost for this expert architect or engineer report.
The engineer or the architect is gonna say you need to do a moisture test for me to tell you whether you need to recover or not.
Can I just square mine?
It's, it's actually true. Only, and I don't say this to get around applause, it's just if you have an expert, he's not gonna stand here and say anything about that roof without testing it. Because he'd be crazy to do that.
In other words, if you go to a doctor, and he takes an X-ray, he can't just look at you and diagnose what you are. You have to have an MRI, or you have to have an X-ray, or you have to have some kind of a test before they open you up and operate. That's what we're doing here. We're going to have a test to see what is going on. And then we can decide, we need an operation and remove a limb, or can we do something a little less expensive?
That's one way to put it.
I have a question on this.
Maybe you have. Maybe you could put some back in the corner.
So, to put it in another way, there's a possibility that we can do, that we can do an effective repair or replacement of the Nottingham roof and spend a lot less, and save a lot of money. There's more than one way to take care of the problem. But in order for us to make, in order for us to have the information that the new board can make an appropriate decision, this test has to get done.
Well, yeah, if you want, if you want to know what type of a system you're allowed to put on your roof, you need to know, you need to have a test.
Okay. So we need this regard, this is a basic step that's needed in order for, in order for the board to make the proper decision.
You need to be armed with the information of what's happening with your roof. I can't tell you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Yes, there's a motion to table.
There was a motion to table. Is there a second?
No second.
Who made the motion to table?
John made the motion to table.
John made a motion to table. And there's no second. Any comments from the unit owners as far as the motion to get the moisture test?
I have a question for Jason. The, if perchance, I mean, it makes sense what you're saying. An engineer is gonna obviously say, "Do the moisture test." But if you were to ask an engineer, let's say, obviously, there's some moisture that otherwise there wouldn't be an issue, which you would be able to tell an engineer. If he says it's under, let's say it's 23% or 20%, and we fix it the less expensive way, I'm sure an engineer, or I'm assuming an engineer, tell me if you think I'm wrong, would tell you the pros and cons of doing it that way. He might say, if he's, if he's an engineer, is professional, he's gonna say, "Well, go the cheaper route, but just know statistically, if you do it like this, it's gonna cost you X amount of dollars in the future. And if you don't do it like this, it's gonna cost you, et cetera." You don't need, I think an engineer would be able to provide that information without necessarily doing the standard protocol of doing the moisture test. What we want to know is, is it, is it more cost-effective in the future? You don't know, the board doesn't know, an engineer would. Fortunately, Marcio's not here, and I'm sure he'd be able to better advise us. I think that's why perhaps the motion was made to table, because we don't have that information. So, I don't know, what are your, actually, I have one more, one more question to you as well. The, who's that, whatever company does do the moisture test, if the board decides to do it, is that the same company that would be doing the repaired? Okay, just making sure. Well, I hate to say obviously, but nothing's obvious. Just making sure.
Okay, to answer your first question, the answer is, of course, an engineer is going to provide more information than I can provide for you, saying you need to have a moisture test in order to tell what type of roofing system you're going to use. So what I'm saying is, yes, you would pay a lot more for that. I think that if you get, in my opinion, if you get the moisture test and it's certified, if it's over 25%, you don't need, now need to pay for that engineer, because you know you have to do it. Whereas if it is, whatever it comes down to, like under, then you can go to an engineer. He doesn't have to perform the test. So that part of his fee won't be there. But he can give you advice based on your report. So the money doesn't go to waste. Because if you don't do this, that means you're gonna hire an engineer. He's gonna include this price on top of what he's gonna do, when you may not need him. If it's already, if you know it's over 25%, you're not gonna do that.
I understand. But I'm saying, the scenario of it being under 25%, if an engineer says, if it's under 25, either way, whether it's over or if it's under, if you have any problems, it's to our detriment to not actually do it. This might not be what he says. It's to our detriment. We might say, "Wow, what's the point? We need to go for the more expensive, more expensive rovers, a professional or a variety of professionals." Marcio being one, another independent one, saying, "No matter what, you should do it, because in the long run, it's gonna cost more money." Now the board has more information to make a sound decision for the future, not just the present. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm going. I don't know if you agree with that assessment. It's not an opinion, it's just an assessment of...
My opinion is you're not wasting your money if you do this, because you can use it either way. That's my opinion.
I'm not disagreeing. Yeah, okay.
Any other comments from unit owners on the motion? Please call the roll.
Holly Thompson?
Yes.
Frances Mesereau, yes. Mark Richman?
Yes.
Sandy Bev?
Yes.
John Labriola?
Oh, no. No.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Thou?
Yes.
Gerald, you said it's the one. No, we gotta do the Nancy.
Now, one thing, no, I think you voted for Nan to be placed on the agenda. No, you put, you put it on the agenda after this. So now, this next agenda item, the next agenda item, which was added by your vote earlier in the meeting, is to approve the election monitor.
I have a motion to approve the election monitor at a cost not to exceed $1,844.
I make a motion to approve the election monitor at a cost not to exceed $1,814.
$14.
$14.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the board?
Have we shopped this around? Can we get an election monitor for $1,322?
No.
No.
We shopped this, yeah, we shopped this around in 2011 when Nan was first hired.
This is from the Ambusmen's Office. Go ahead.
We shopped this around when Nan was first hired for the first election. I think it was 2011 when Mr. Director Richmond ran, and she turned out to be really top-notch.
You also had her last year, from when I was here.
Thank you.
And she had so much fun. She's doing it as a cut-rate job for a...
We tried, we tried, but she refused.
It's basically a cost per door, is what it is. And they don't negotiate.
Any other comments from the board?
But they didn't increase it. This is the exact prices last year, so...
Any comments from the unit owners? Call the roll, please.
I just wanted to add that there's going to be a moderator from the Ambusmen on Candidates Night also, to control it, which nobody has mentioned at all, which I think is important.
Let's finish this motion. You're on Good and Welfare, right? Did you put your, okay, so it has to be on this motion.
Any other comments on the motion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Holly Thompson?
Yes.
Frances Mesereau, yes. Mark Richman?
Yes.
Sandy Bev?
Yes.
John Labriola?
Yes.
Gerald Miro?
Yes.
Marvin Thou?
Yes.
Now we have the added item, remarks from Gerald Miro. Thank you, Mark, and I appreciate all your help getting this on the agenda. I will be ending my term on the board on January 27, when the original election was supposed to take place. I thank the owners who voted for me two years ago, and want them to know I did my best to represent them. Not living here for six months limits my hands-on ability to do my job, but I try to stay connected and attend all board meetings wherever I was. Amongst my main accomplishments was recruiting good candidates for the board. Two years ago, when I ran, I convinced three owners to join me, Marvin Thou, Mark Richman, and Sharon Treppichion. Once they agreed to run, I sent a direct mail to almost 500 owners asking them to vote for the slate. It worked, and we turned away a board of four appointed members who are unable to put together a budget for two years and caused the village to go into a deep operating deficit. Unfortunately, my running mates, once they got on board, decided to support the previous board members who remained and were set on retribution. It was understandable, since the previous board members were treated so badly, but it led to a lot of unnecessary legal expenses and nasty confrontations. I tried to intervene, but was ignored and removed from the conversation, which is where I stand today. Last year, in an attempt to get back into the conversation, I recruited a few younger owners to run for the board, but did not invest much time into their campaign since I was already on the board. Fortunately, John Labriola was able to put together a campaign and gathered the most votes. His object has been to closely watch spending and ask important questions. He has not been well-received by his senior board members, even when he saved the association money, as he did with the handicap matter. He has also brought more transparency with his blog, which allows owners who can't attend meetings to view them wherever they are and have a better idea of what is going on in International Village. It's clear to me, the board has been wasting time on inconsequential matters like the Nancy Schute affair, instead of taking care of business. Six buildings have needed to be remodeled for the last two years. Instead, the board commissioned a 40-year engineering report that was not required, and threw in cameras and door locks and other expenses instead of taking care of what already had to be done. It's what I call bully politics. Since I moved to IV in 1999, each year, the board majority has always flexed its muscles and refused to include opposition ideas. Today, the president does not allow board members to serve on committees, with the sole exception of the secretary, who chairs the Sales and Lease Committee. Who should be on committees if not someone elected, some elected board members? Should committees only reflect the president's views? In conclusion, I hope the 2014 board, whoever is elected, will work together for the betterment of the community and not waste time on this wall stuff. Thank you very much. That concludes the agenda items. Now it is time for Good and Welfare. First is DeWolff.
I don't really have any questions. I just, I just wanted to say that I hope Candidates Night, I hope everyone behaves, and I hope that Sandy and Mark don't exhibit the same behavior they did tonight by rudely leaving the meeting. I think Jerry deserves some respect. Whether you disagree with him or agree with him, he served for two years, you don't proudly walk out of someone's speech. You don't do that. It's just rude, very rude. I think he deserves an apology when they come back, and I hope they don't exhibit the same rudeness at Candidates Night with me and the other candidates they may disagree with. It seems like they may. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, DeWolff. Next is Stuart Wolf.
Now, I don't have too much to say. I just want to mention that during Candidates Night, the moderator, I'm told, is going to be someone from the Ambusmen's office, which means they don't know anybody, they have no axe to grind, no political anything, so they should be totally objective. And the price, I'm told, was very reasonable, $150, and we can hopefully keep the peace Candidates Night. But there's one other thing, and that is, what my son just said holds true. And at the last meeting, which was, the behavior was totally uncalled for. And the parties, which I'm not gonna name, but everyone knows they're on film, should have been warned and then should have been asked to leave the meeting. You can't discriminate against anyone. Everyone should behave properly. Some people lose their temper, that's all right for a minute, but going after someone is totally uncalled for. And the plot of that one, after there have been six or seven incidents on it. So I hope that we have under control for Candidates Night.
Thank you, Stuart. The last one is Paulette Anderson.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. I would be remiss, I would be remiss if I didn't say something tonight. And I'd like to start off by honoring Jerry Mira. It is often said that actions speak louder than words, and so it follows that if...